America into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. There's a lot of pride, there's a lot of stuff that is in the works, one is completed, and practically nothing's been paid for, okay? So I'm gonna start with what we toured, Great Oak, Middle School, we toured that. It's all done, it seems like a nice job, okay? Not an expert, but it seems to me like it's working, and I haven't heard any complaints. What happened was, that total job.
Do you have any handouts by the way, Jack? Or do you have any handouts for us?
What I gave you.
Okay. Oh, previously?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that job cost, they estimated it cost four million two hundred fifty-five thousand, okay? We've collected so far, four hundred seventeen thousand, we got that from the state. The rest of it, we all paid for it out of our general fund. Our general fund, even though it was big collection time, I talked to Jim last week, we had seven million dollars left in it. And just think, school, their allocation is thirty-three million, so we were probably owed fifteen million less more to them. The state is one million eight-eight-eight-seven-five-nine that they owes for completion of that. What I found out is, these aren't, these aren't followed religiously, okay? What happens is, we get the grant, we get the work, the vendor gets paid, and, uh, did we get the money? No, we were supposed to submit invoices to the state, which we didn't do, okay? Now we got it, they got the person to get it done. The young boys go to the state, they went there late. It means in our cash flow, we're down close to two million dollars.
So when you say "we," the position here that's supposed to be doing that is what position?
That's not determined. I would say, on this one, Herman type, that wanted to take the ball and run with it. Well, that's fine, but he also, Herman's not elected, he's not an officer of the, you know, the town, or anything. I think, when we get this grant, whoever got the grant and the proposal, okay, they should follow it through, or... My suggestion is, we have a grant writer, maybe the grant writer should follow it, no, I would say.
The person, I, if you're a grant writer, you're responsible for all grants in this town. No, if, since or buts.
The grant writer should be controlling it, should be making sure, and saying to the person who's sending the money, where the invoice is, what did you guys give it to me?
Yeah.
There needs to be a spreadsheet with all the grants out there that have been applied for, that they're thinking of, whatever, status, grants we had, grants in progress, something, a control sheet.
Yeah.
Seems to me there's nothing.
And report, you know, we could ask them to report that every month if they want, okay? Always, we could be seriously in debt and not know it. Right now, we've drained with the flood, we've paid a lot of the bills from the flood, of our general fund.
I mean, just think about this, I mean, somebody gets up and leaves, moves, dies, whatever, you know? What's the status of these things? Where are they, where do they reside? What's been submitted, like Paul has said? I mean, essentially, it has to be one single person, I like Herman, and I think he does amazing work. But stuff like that should not be in the hands of somebody outside of the town government.
Well, I told, I told Herman, I says, don't think the town doesn't appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do, but, you know, we just can't throw this stuff around.
Yeah.
You're talking two million dollars that should be in our pocket.
Are they required though for the financials?
Huh?
For the auditors, don't they require?
They follow us on the minutes.
Full report?
Yeah, and that's what's important about our minutes. You know, the auditor's pulled us to see if these things were approved at this board, okay? Which held us up quite a while, and, um, you know, if we don't document that it was approved, they could, they could hold up that audit, which is now it's January, and we're nowhere near finished, nowhere near. So, that one, this is the, um, the gym cafeteria. One last thing on this one, there's a million dollars from Eversource, on the, I'm still back at the HVAC project, Great Oak. The funding is, is nine hundred fifty thousand to the town, there's four hundred seventeen thousand from the state, from Eversource, I'm sorry, I forgot that, four seventeen. There's a million eight-eight from the state, and a million dollars from Eversource. Five years, zero interest, on bill loan, go figure. Who's gonna figure that? Who's gonna figure that five years out of the world we're gonna get our million dollars? Meanwhile, we've paid the million dollars, right? They're supposed to give us the savings on our, on our energy bill, right? I'm not saying there won't be, the savings is supposed to pay off that million dollar loan, yeah? Five years from now, is there gonna be a big party saying that the loan's been paid? The paid loan party, okay? Now.
Well, does he even have a copy of the actual, um, energy audit itself, so that we can see what they promised from a savings perspective?
I'm sure Herman has it.
Because, yeah, because essentially, you'd have to look at, you know, your kilowatt savings, the costs, et cetera.
They're supposed to track.
But somebody has to track that.
They have to, they have to track that against the bill.
Yeah.
The people that pay that is the Board of Education, we're not paying that bill, okay? We also have here, same school, we have the Great Oak, this is the cafeteria gym, HVAC. Why that wasn't done, well, I know why it wasn't done, 'cause the roof wasn't done, okay? That one's a million five, of which, okay, we're supposed to get a grant of six hundred seventy-three thousand from the state, on the million five. We got, again, Eversource Energy Efficient Rebate, twenty-one hundred dollars per ton. The bond requirement process, seven hundred two thousand dollars, right now, we're paying the whole thing, right now. So right now, when they get going on that, and they have, they signed a bill, they signed the agreement, when they get going on it, that million five, we could still be out for it, right? Next little guy here is the, um, I'm sorry, they changed this, they changed this one, okay? The total bonding requirement for the town now, they changed the numbers, is six, is just about a million dollars. It went from seven hundred two thousand dollars, just about a million. I'll hand, anything you don't have, make copies.
The Go's Cafeteria, you mean?
Yep.
Okay, so what is the new number?
The new number, uh, was, the original number was a million five, now it's a million seven ninety-six to do the project, and of that, the town's gotta pay a million dollars, okay? And we're hoping to get a rebate from Eversource of one hundred sixty thousand, and again, we get a grant from the state of six hundred thirty-eight thousand, okay? I'll hand this out before, no good. Just I'll give you copies of these, so you'll have them, okay?
And typically, how long does it take for us to start getting that money?
From the state?
Yeah.
When we hand them the bills and the job's complete, it should be, we should get the money.
Is it typically lump sum, or is there, there's a piece deal?
Well, sometimes they got a ten, ten percent holdback, sometimes, somehow with their approval. We haven't closed out and finished up the refunds on the middle school.
So we're still owed money on the middle?
We're still owed money on the middle school. How long has that been around? Three, four years anyway? Maybe more?
So, so again, why, like, who?
We hired this firm to handle it, because with the high school, we went like sixteen years till we finally settled it. We had, we hired, we hired this firm, I think we paid some close to a hundred thousand dollars, to take all the stuff, all the requirements the state wants, all the forms they want, and everything. That's been presented, now what's holding it up, I don't know, okay? But it's still out there, it's still out there with the schools.
How long's it been out there? Just curious, is it a year, two years, six months?
Oh, it's been at least a year, at least.
And who do they report to?
Pardon?
Who do they report to, this firm, that's hired to take care of it? Is that the question of the day?
No, a lot of this, this is new, I mean, we could go over, right, that, somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta give us an answer.
Oh, like, but Paul, like Paul's question though, like, who do they report to? So if somebody had the question to say, what's the status of this? Who, who do, who do you call? Like, who do you report to?
Well, it's supposed to be the school billing committee.
Okay.
The school billing committee has control of that. The school committee has Great Oak, and we know we have problems there. I mean, who defines it, what money went where, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and we still got, the last thing they wanted to do was get Quaker Farms School done. We got Quaker Farms School done, we've done the pole pack, we've done all the stuff, all the repairs, we got all air-conditioned buildings, we got the roof put on, Great Oak, alright? That should pull us off for a while, 'cause I've got a schedule here, most of our bonding, right now, it's, it's, it's down a little bit. Our bonding now, with the interest on her, is just about forty million, about fifty million, okay? Most of that, except for a few different items, is the schools, it's all school. So when they say that we don't put money into education, we're putting a lot of money into education. Interest, principal, and everything on these notes, it's a lot of money, okay? The buildings are all, kind of, all up to date now, right? We did a great job with Great Oak, I think, and Quaker Farms, we'll bring that up to date. I got, I got, um, I got some notices, everybody, yeah, we got some notices on Quaker Farms. And that's, that's what's coming up Wednesday. Do we, and we have a whole list of items, do we bond it? Do we, we're not gonna go out and buy a bond, we're gonna approve it, we can go out, a bond approval. Doesn't mean we're gonna get the bond, because if we do get a bond, we'll put all in one lump sum, 'cause it costs us about fifty thousand dollars to get a bond. What they have to do, they have to do a prospectus, so they have to say how many people in town, the middle rate, everything that, they figure out that the people that are gonna invest in our bonds, they can get paid, okay? There's a big difference between getting a bond in Oxford, and getting a bond, and sometimes, sometimes it got a little prairie, okay? Big difference there, but that's the cost of it, and it's almost like a full audit. If you ever seen, I'll get you some of the old ones, they're like a full audit. Okay, so then, we have, um, Great Oak, not Great Oak, Quaker Farms. Quaker Farms just came out.
Hey, Jack, quick question.
Sure.
Um, before you move on to Quaker Farms. The current schools where we got, where we're, where we need to still recoup some money from the state, how, what's the total amount that we're supposed to be getting, and how much of that total amount have we actually gotten?
Okay, there's something, we can, I don't have, I could calculate it, okay, off of these sheets, I don't know.
Guess, isn't it, five million needed, collected, a half a million?
Two, two, probably five million.
We, that's due to us.
Due to us, yeah.
Of that five million due to us, we recouped a half a million?
Four hundred thousand.
So, okay, four, four and a half million is still outstanding.
Yeah, I mean, it's always funny.
And when we're gonna get it, nobody knows.
Well, we hope.
Well, we hope, but that means, like, people have to follow up with invoices, with conversations, and...
That's, that's, that's the million dollar question here.
But it's, but it's still disparate, it's like every, it's every, it's like in ten different places.
Exactly, and we're handing out all this money.
That needs to stop.
And the other thing is, contractors present the bills, and we, you know, we get the, but we pay them, right? Uh, Airtemp, Airtemp did, uh, Great Oak, Airtemp, they're signing a contract for Airtemp for Quaker Farms. Quaker Farms, so far, the estimate's five million dollars, so far. We would get, again, play around with that energy rebate for two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars from Eversource, who knows? The state's promised us two million one twenty-five. That would leave us a bonding position of just about two million six. We gotta add on, now that's what they're gonna be talking about Wednesday night, that project, Quaker Farms, okay? And Quaker Farms can definitely use it, okay? It would be the last school, so for another, another two million six, I think we have, at least I've had it with all these projects, believe. I'm sorry, gave me the wrong number here. This one for the town on Quaker Farms, I'm sorry. Of the five million, three million, three million three belongs to the town. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to bond another three million three. That's, that would all be due as the project's done, but when the project's done, the contractor's waiting at the door, okay? If we approve it, it's all set. Now, it should go fairly smooth, because they're the same people that did Great Oak, and, you know, and the price is right, and I guess they did a good job.
But if you don't do it, if you don't do it, then our cost is five billion dollars.
That's right.
So, or six or seven if you don't do the project today, and the prices go up and up and up.
Not only that, the state legislature has just voted, they had all these HVA funding for different schools, they said, we'll get as many as we can, they pulled the monies back. So this is the end of the, this is the end of the trail on this so far. The state, all of a sudden, they stopped doing it, okay? So we got in the tail end with this thing approved, so if we don't do it, we lose the two point one million. So it's, we gotta do it, we gotta do it, we gotta make that school as, as efficient as the rest of the schools. We used to have people sit at Center School, you talk about Quaker Farm, Center School, and they used to sit there, it was freezing in the gym, the kids would sit there in their coats, and the pipes would rattle so much, you could hardly hear what's going on, and then at the other end of the building, it would be sweat, sweat lather, it was like a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten degrees on the other end of the building, and this went on for years, this went on for years. I mean, we're better than that, I think this town is better than that, so now we got it all back, all up there. Now, the flood stuff.
Before we move on to flood, I just, I didn't fully grasp the firm. What is their, like, purview, like, what is their actual, like, what have they been contracted to do? Well, I meant like in a sentence, or like...
Before you go to bed tonight.
Yeah. Alright.
That was my mistake, asking Herman.
So this, so the firm that you're asking about is the firm that is not to do the project?
No, not Air, no, no, sorry, not me.
To do the invoicing, to follow with the bills.
The reconciliation is my understanding.
Not Airtemp.
Not Airtemp.
Okay.
Um, do you have that, not handy, but at some point, I would like to see that contract maybe? And what is the, so they must be billing us for something, how will we know at what point they've delivered that service to us, I guess?
That's why we got the committee.
What committee?
The committee.
The building committee?
Yeah.
They're responsible.
Why would the building committee be responsible for collecting money for the town?
Yeah, they shouldn't have anything to do with it.
Not the, I'm sorry, the town, we are, and like I said, it used to be up to Herman to go out and get the money, okay? We got a little far behind on, on Great Oak, okay? Now, there's nothing set in stone about who's gonna do this, and I think we should find out who's following this and where we're gonna get the money.
Right, but I think, I'm not sure if we're still talking about the same thing, the firm that they, the school board hired somebody to reconcile.
Oh, that was just for, that was for middle school.
Right, that, I think that's where...
Oh, so there's not an existing one?
No.
Oh.
That's not the middle school, I'm sorry.
So is it completed?
Middle school, as far as I know, it is.
All the bills are broken, so, oh, okay.
And there was, there was money left over on that bond, uh, that we can use.
But I thought you said there was some money outstanding that was still due?
Due us, but we paid for all these things, the state still owes us money on the final, the final wrap-up, okay? They owe it, they owe to us.
But that, that conversation between the state and the...
School, I would...
The schooling, or who?
No, Jim's handling that, now, let's not get, the middle school.
Well, that's not good for you.
The middle school, the middle school is where we hired that firm. To go, to go and present everything to the state with the right forms, dot all the i's, cross all the t's, 'cause we kind of screwed up the high school.
So we should be going to them for answers as far as where the state sits?
That's what Jim's working with, um...
That's what Jim is, Jim is taking the responsibility.
Jim's taking that, and that last one, yeah, and we need somebody to give him a push, somebody to give the state a push, okay? Now, they hold the money, we're, we're out there borrowing the money.
We have a new, a new state rep.
Yeah.
It's just hard to get our money for us.
You know, maybe we'll get more.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'll tell you, other towns, they get these grants, you can see, Sheldon's got a lot of money. They got a seventeen, their middle rate's seventeen. They get grants all over the place, all the roads go into, they get grants for all the roads.
We need to redefine grant writer to grant administrator, to administer the grants and actually be the sole person responsible for these grants. Not a building committee, the grant administrator.
Yes, definitely.
Because then, when we have a question, you, Mr. Grant, whoever, you come in and answer our questions.
That's right, you can sit right there in that chair, no, that's right. The first electman's, uh, would like to, he claims, hire a lobbyist to go to the state and lobby for different grants and things like that, yeah? Lobbyists don't come cheap, I can tell you that now, right? I think, if you got a full-time person here, you could have them lobby for our money, right? Just throwing it out, don't wanna hear it, okay? But, the big thing, the big thing this week is Harry signed us for Airtemp, but the thing is, do they have the money for, for that? That's what, they're back to us, and, um, you know, it's a lot of money.
Is there any upfront payments that are required for the work described?
For the contractor, I'd have to look.
No, I'm just wondering, because if it takes so long for us to go get grants and the prospectus and all the paperwork to be done, it's not like a grant is turned around and money received in thirty days to start using. So if you need, if we have seven million dollars left in the general fund, and then all of a sudden, now we got to start paying bills, 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 and upfront payments, that seven million dollars could come down relatively quickly.
Oh, sure, and this is, the seven million was last week, this is, don't forget, this is the last full month of the second half of your tax payment.
And we need to maintain at least ten percent of our...
We have to keep and have balance.
Five and a half million dollars of these, right? We have to have in the general fund roughly, a ten percent of our...
Fifty-five million.
So five point five million dollars.
We should have in that fund, 'cause if we go off the bond, if we drop that way down, we're gonna pay a higher interest rate, right? We're gonna pay, risky equals return. You know, if Victor would pay his taxes, right? We would, we'd be way ahead of the game here. I thought you were exempt at a certain age. The roof for the Great Oak school came in higher, I gotta find it, came in higher, okay? What we anticipated, and...
Do we know why? Is it just deterioration, uh...
I haven't reviewed it, I don't think, I can't remember the roof, if we paid, approved the funds for that, that one. That I had to, that's what Jim's not, I'll find out for you, and I'll also get you a total list of what's, what we committed to, what we got from the state, and how much we're coming out of our pocket, okay? I'll get you that for this meeting, the...
So the meeting on Wednesday, we're just discussing Quaker Farms, that's it?
Well, they wanna, they wanna bond, or they wanna bond appropriation. So the bond appropriation, if we said four million dollars, we got the appropriate four million dollars over there. He has money appropriated, that we put over as a bond approval, we never went and got the bond, 'cause we're gonna make it all one bond, rather than get about six bonds and pay fifty thousand for each one of them, okay? And that's what we're holding for.
But how much, how do we know how much total bonding we need? Because we have more projects than beyond the schools, and we've got sewers, we've got the flood, we've got everything.
Yep.
So, is it ten million dollars?
Well, we're gonna, we gotta, we gotta fix, you could throw in there, number one, is the, is the fire, the fire truck. It's a million eight, by the time that's done, it's two million bucks, okay? So that's two million you could throw in there. We improved, uh, two million for the pump at Towner Lane. From what I understand, that was kind of a home run, because it became, it came in at a million two instead of two million. And we used the other monies to, since they were there, they did some of the roadwork at the flood, because it's the same time. So we saved, we saved a lot of money, I think, at doing a lot of the work at the flood, that we used, you know, good contractors, and we had good engineering, and we did save a lot, we still got a lot to go though. We got Lachlan Road to fix, we have, um, Lachlan Road, uh, it's one of our big natured projects, okay? But Seth Dunn's, they did a nice job on the Seth Dunn Bridge, didn't they? Better than it was.
Better than it was.
They said it's temperate, don't look temperate to me.
Temperate is good.
Right? They're, they're working on Park Road, and that'll be done. Now, that bridge is gonna cost us too.
Someday, someday, yeah.
We'll get money from the, we'll get money, we'll get money from the state, the state hasn't stepped up on a lot of this. They did all the state roads, they did, and they also did, at Lachlan Road, where it reached thirty-four, they put a lot of material back on the side there, that was all washed out, okay? That's done, but... Some of the floods subsided. Okay, rich rate was two hundred eighty-seven thousand. This is Park Road, that estimate, there's a million three sixty-two, okay? That's all on us, million three sixty-two, that's going in. We paid for a lot of that stuff, Seth Dunn, Seth Dunn Road, I've got here, nine hundred forty-eight, oh, just about a million dollars on Seth Dunn. This stuff starts...
Well, we're not gonna include like wants into this bond request, right? Like, for example, um, the sidewalk, we're not gonna include that, because it's a want, or the, or what's the road?
Chestnut Tree.
Chestnut Tree Hill Road.
Found out something.
We're not gonna include that.
Yeah, that ninety thousand that we knocked down has never been paid, so I don't know.
What do you mean, it's never been paid?
He put a bill in for ninety thousand for engineering, remember?
Yeah, so we never approved it.
We didn't approve it, so it didn't get paid, but the bill's still...
Pay?
That project, as far as I'm concerned, you know, may, may be nice to have, but that's not necessary, not at this stage of the game.
Not when it's gonna fall on the back of taxpayers on top of all this other stuff.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely, so I, you know, what do we do? Are we committed? Somebody take a state grant on that, I have no idea, nobody told me. But they wanted that ninety thousand for engineering.
And also, we're not gonna bond any money for that school either, the Center School, no?
That's another stuff, you, fucking...
Yeah.
What happened is, here's what happened, this might be over. Got down to the wire, where December was the end, you could spend that money, the ARPA money, and they had two millions sitting in the account. Me, I'd have paid off the fire truck, two million bucks, no, they took it, and they did, they got Center School. I, I, I don't know if the plans are finished, I have no idea what they're gonna do there, but half of it's the police department, and the other ones for, um, to pick a big poker table for Victor there, the community center.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna repeat what I've said before. If they spent the two million dollars on that school, and it requires ten million dollars, that two million dollars... If they spent the two million dollars on that school and it requires ten million dollars, that two million dollars can, they can rot in that school. I will never, in my, personally, I will never approve another dollar for that school. And it will be on them to have wasted two million dollars because it could have been spent on a fire truck and other necessary projects.
Do we know who won the bid on that project for the school?
Um, I know, uh, I know who the, uh, person overseeing the project. The contractor, I don't know, but I know that, um.
Daniel.
Huh?
Daniel.
Diamond Rose.
Yeah, Diamond Rose.
He's overseeing the project.
He's overseeing the project, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, the contractor, is, is his construction company doing it?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I have no idea. I just thought he was overseeing the project, there's a project manager. I have no idea.
Well, I don't know who the contractor is.
Yeah.
Or that's going, we're gonna go out and hire different people. That just shows you, you know, they're, they're running, you know, they're running on, on no schedule. But, it's the end of ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Does anybody know, are we still under a state emergency?
I don't know.
No.
It was not in a state emergency, obviously, all the budgets that we approved.
Yeah.
They're not there. That's, that's all been approved, budgets, and this has to go. The other thing I asked for was, we had a, a meeting maybe two months ago. And at that meeting, there were raises put through, right? And I still haven't gotten a list of who got the raise and how much, because those were not included in our budget.
These are retroactive for the non.
Retroactive to supervisors.
Supervisors?
Yeah.
Or non, uh.
No, that's the one they just put through.
That's what I was referring to.
There's two raises that's gone through, I got, non, non-union.
Okay.
And the supervisors' union, they, they satisfied after two and a half years, right? But, we're over budget in those. We're over budget, we didn't put it, did we put them in?
No, and we didn't put anything in for the police either.
The police, I don't know if they settled that.
I don't know.
I don't think they settled that one.
We never put in any money for, for raises.
No.
Only money we put in was for potential backfilling of jobs. Uh, if people were gonna leave early, you know, trying to hire people. But, no.
Has anything Marvin said about who might be leaving and what they're doing?
Who's that?
About the retirement situation?
Oh. What, what are you here?
Not us.
No? I know Gord's leaving. Gord's gonna retire, so building inspector.
Okay.
Okay? Got a rumor? But she's gonna roll her.
I think Jim isn't a kid, he's staying from the last, he told me.
Yes and no.
I think he's.
Now he's teetering?
Yeah, cause he was getting, June or June or something.
June thirtieth.
Yeah, June thirtieth. Yeah, they gotta make up their mind.
Well, that's when they're all eligible, right?
Yeah.
June thirtieth, Margaret's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody else, they hired somebody.
Yeah. So, yeah, she's going, she's gonna stay part-time though, till they get, uh, till they get up and go. Teaching, you know, teaching the ropes.
And they, and if Jim leaves, they better hire a professional for that office. So, somebody who's got qualifications to do that job. So.
Should be.
Every job should be a qualified applicant.
Board of Finance should have the say on that job.
Yeah.
That should not be.
That's true.
Or it's like the Board of Finance. And to make it a true Board of Finance, the Board of Finance would also handle all the, uh, that person would report directly to the Board of Finance. Not the, cause what, what happens is, conflict, he tells them to pay and he's stuck because we tell him not to pay. So it's, it's, uh, it's gonna be, it's, yeah, Margaret's leaving. Um, I don't know, Scott Pelletier's thinking about it. Okay, so a lot of good people. Wayne's thinking about it. Right? So.
Is Penny in the assessor's office, is she due to retire or no?
I don't think so.
No? Yeah, did you hear about what went on today?
No, but I heard Kevin got the job.
Yeah, he, he put in his letter today. And supposedly the person that they hired for the apartment job, she left as well, so only Penny's in the office. As of today.
As of today.
Yeah.
Well, he, he gave her two weeks notice.
Yeah.
He's going to Rocky Hill?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yes.
I just heard about it today.
He, he got an offer in Rocky Hill and Torrington.
Torrington?
And Torrington.
See, it's a shame when we lose qualified good people. We shouldn't have to lose them.
Well, you know what, I could tell you. Following the, following the New Haven County papers, it's a revolving block. That a lot of people don't stay in those jobs, so they go here to there, and I guess you could transfer your pension. So kind of, it kind of makes them mobile and they go around and around, right? Same thing with superintendents, you, it's rare to see a superintendent of schools in that same job four years, it's rare.
You're about, other reasons, though. That, that office is.
Oh, I know, yeah. Look, there's always reasons. Right? So, hey, I don't know. Anyway, our checkbook took out from my last report, okay? Paying like the, uh, the engineers, all the, you know, people with the tree guys, concrete guys, uh, all these different things. Seven, one point seven three five, I think. Now, it'll be more, cause he's been paying bills. But, we look at, we're looking for seventy-five percent from FEMA to get that, to get some money. How long that's gonna take? Does anybody disagree with me that FEMA may be a little bit overstretched right now? Right?
Yeah, on the other side of the country.
Yeah, at least on, they still haven't taken care of North Carolina yet.
Angie said it took us forever to get money from the tornado.
Oh, it did, it did, it did, forever.
He's still waiting for something?
Huh?
Did he ever get it all, or is he still waiting for something?
Yeah, I guess he was waiting, I, I think he got most of that. We go all the way back to the, that snowstorm, that three feet of snow, we had to shovel the roof at the high school area. They put in FEMA for that, so I think we got paid for that. But, I would say FEMA's gotta be all along.
Oh, yeah.
I would assume.
You brought up the roof before, that Great Oak, you guys did approve it at the seven twenty-nine special meeting. You approved it at the, um, July twenty-ninth special meeting, out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund, okay, I thought so.
It wasn't that much money, was it?
Three hundred and two thousand.
Yeah, we, we took it, yeah, we took it out of the general fund. That had to get done first before we could do the, the gymnasium. Okay? And we also did the pool pack out of the general fund, I think, yeah.
Ninety-eight thousand or something, or something like that.
Oh, that was up there.
Yeah. Okay. So what other projects do we have? And is this the complete list of all grants?
We, oh, no, here, hold on, I have, I have another sheet.
Like, is there anything that we're not aware of?
Probably, yeah. Yes.
And like, people, we should not be submitting grants for things that we're unaware of. Like, there should be a review process before submitting.
That's what I was saying, a grant in each step of the way.
Yeah.
Something that's a proposal, to approve, to partially in progress, to whatever the progression is.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a few little knickknacks to throw in there, okay? The, um. We have put them down, remember I had a list here back in July? I gave us a list. And a lot of that stuff, some of this stuff's been paid for. The town, well, on this list, the town remain, forest main, the million two, we had it in the two million, million two, but believe me, we used the other money. The rescue was a million eight-five, the Great Oak Roof we took care of, the e-commerce pump station, four hundred, that was taken care of. Paid for, I don't know, with grants. The library basement, we still owe four hundred thousand on that. I'll give you the story if you want, but I'm kind of responsible for that. Because when they built the library, they built a lot of basement. So when they're having the Slutman meeting that night, he says, it's crazy not to put the basement in. And now it's full, stuffed and everything. And it was supposed to cost two hundred fifty thousand, it wound up, somehow wound up with four hundred. Okay, that hasn't paid, that would go into the bond issue, cause it's been sitting there for a long time. Uh, Chestnut Tree Hill Road up, it's ninety-nine thousand dollars, but we're not gonna pay that. The electrical wiring we paid for on the contingency was a hundred seventy-four thousand. So that's small stuff like that, we, we conquered most of it, either taking it out of our general fund or we got a few where we just gotta bond. But not much of that, okay? Uh, as far as any sidewalk out there, it's three million dollar sidewalk. Okay, which we're on the hook for twenty percent.
If we do the project, you mean the, the phase two?
The one that started it over there, across the street.
Yeah, but that's not, didn't start it, but the next phase is still up for consideration. It's not been approved by us or the town or anybody.
Well, all, all I know is, okay, they claimed they've got a federal grant and that they have a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk committee or meets, I don't know.
Hasn't ever come before this board?
It has not. Half of, the one, something when Kathy was at O'Neill, when she was the grant writer. Her last thing was to take the sidewalk that's out from town hall here, down a little bit and back up. That was, uh, that was before this board approved. Paid for beach making.
Because they can't approve that sidewalk without coming for, like about getting Board of Finance approval and town meeting approval because of the cost of the actual project. So, it's not, it's not, a done deal, not even close.
Some people think it is.
Well, show me the approvals that they got.
I'm not in favor of approving.
Neither am I.
I'm not either.
No, to me, we got a lot of other things that, we got a lot of stuff to pay for, we got this flood to pay for, okay? You know, like I said, the last big one is Lachlan Road, but I gotta call Gallagher, the engineer. It was one other project, he hadn't figured it out yet, what it would cost, or, you know, who the contract would be, we gotta get that too. And I think that's expensive, alright? Other than that, I think we got most of the flood expense that we know of. And we've taken a lot of general fund, but we already paid for it. We just gotta reduce, we build up our general fund. The other thing is, here, let's see what we got. Those are the projects I know. Oh, okay. Like I say, the one that's up in here is the sidewalk. There may be, there may be a little confusion on that. Did they ever start that sidewalk in front of the?
No.
In front of the firehouse?
No. They repaired the, uh, the laptop, but that's supposed to be ripped out eventually. Because remember, I guess what Jeff explained was that entrance there in front of the Grange was gonna go away. And they were gonna rip out all of the, uh, like the gully where the water is. And they were gonna fill all that in, um, but no, that sidewalk to nowhere, it hasn't started yet.
No. And we don't wanna start it.
No. But the way, the reason we approved it was because to repair that area of work, there's gonna be only two thousand more dollars than.
Right, kind of the firehouse.
Then they do it, yeah. That's why we did approve it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I remember before he walked in here, he had zero hopes.
Yeah.
Right? When he explained it that way, okay, so Graham will get, we'll get the thing repaired.
And I think we also said if, if they were to try to come back for more money?
Yeah.
That it was not going to happen.
Wait, it's, it's amazing, I thought that was a hot project that had to get done. Didn't it?
He needed something to be either approved or.
Cause that was back when, when the weather was still decent.
Yeah.
To get the, to get the grant, huh?
I needed that, probably, I don't know. I don't know. Our next regular meeting, I'll see if I can get the grant writer in here.
That would be great.
Huh?
Can we ask her to come prepared?
I'm gonna ask her to come with all the open grants that you have and, uh, where we stand on, okay? Herman did do me a pretty decent.
Give any debt, any, any debt they're considering too.
Yeah, I guess the other thing, why you mention that. Shouldn't they, the grant writer, talk to people before they came up with a grant and go chase the grant? Aren't we doing it backwards? Say, hey, wait a minute, grant writer, we need a grant for this, okay? And then go get it. Not saying, oh, by the way, I got us this grant. They're gonna give us fifty percent, you guys owe fifty percent, right? And all of a sudden we got a two million dollar bill sitting in front of us. They're doing it backwards, right? That, they should be, the front office should be asking, or the schools should be asking.
Because there should be some like forward forecasting.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that they should have like a, a budget, like we do the budget, they should have a budget, say, okay, we're gonna need, need to do certain projects, we need to look for grants for these. I mean, that's what we did with the Boys and Girl Club, we looked, Biden, but they looked ahead of time to see what grants were, they can potentially get, put into the budget to say, yeah, that's what we're gonna look for and.
Yeah.
But that conversation should be with us because if, especially if there's a matching piece of it, it's hard for this board to look forward if we don't know what other surprise grants will come out. It's very frustrating to not have a plan.
Well, let's, I'll get her here, okay?
Yeah, but I'd also like to understand that person's role and responsibilities as well.
That's why we're here.
To what, what, what do they understand their role to be? And, and can they adapt to take on all requirements?
No, we had a, we had somebody here, but that's not the same person as the grant writer now. We had, we had a grant writer here and she was giving us the list, remember? And the, the stuff on it.
That was Helen, wasn't it?
Huh?
Kathy?
Yeah, that was, that was her, Kathy, right?
O'Neill?
Yeah.
No, after Kathy.
Like Helen went in for a short while.
Helen, that's right, Helen, Helen did it.
She had a spreadsheet.
Yeah, she did, Helen was fine.
Yeah. Yeah, she did come, she did come.
Yeah, Helen did, right?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
But, but also, couldn't like, um, Jim give us like a monthly report about the finances? Because I feel like, you know, sometimes we're in the dark here.
We are. Hold on.
A lot of times, maybe.
We don't, we haven't got the audit yet. You know, the audit, the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, okay? So he's been working on that now. And he's, yeah, he's, he's, he's very, I don't think. How's our, how's our software coming along?
Don't look at me.
Yeah.
I, I.
How's our tablets?
Those tablets.
Right?
I was, I think, this is my personal feeling. I think as Board of Finance members, we should have the ability to log into some system to say, what's our current status from a financial perspective? To see, you know, rather than waiting on people to give us information, we are the Board of Finance.
Yep.
We don't get, we don't get the information.
We should have, and this is why, a lot of these towns are already having, the larger towns are having AI meetings. Now, if we had the, the system on and the AI, anybody here could type into different grant and check, how much the grant is, how much has been spent so far? Every grant, you could do that with AI, you could do, you know, you could go research anything you want and, and we should have that.
But I think that's.
This isn't an antique.
I think that assumes you have a competent accounting system, accounting software, which it doesn't sound like we do since not even every department can access it.
That's right. That I don't understand. You're the, you're the telecommunications guy, telecommunications guy. Why can't we have an email from Public Works down here?
An email?
Not an email, we can't link in our, our software for the accounting system up there. Is there, what am I missing?
I mean, you can do it through a remote connection.
A VPN or a network of some kind.
You, there's a way to do it, but it doesn't work well. I mean, you really should have like a web-based tool, a web-based accounting system where you can access it from anywhere. Um, and, and then be able to log in and we could be able to log in, you know, authorized people could do that. And then, since it's web-based, that's where the artificial intelligence kicks in.
That's where it kicks in, all towns are turning to that.
Yeah. Listen, I'm of the opinion that if this software system doesn't start to get used, uh, maybe we should think about scrapping it and think about that investment is wasted dollars? And let's start looking for a real accounting system that's web-based, that we could actually grow it?
The one that has it up and running is the, the school system.
Yeah, but they're, they're in a physical one location. Yeah, but they're they're in a physical one location.
Yeah.
They have to figure out, does that work for?
They have a CER or?
I don't know.
Well, they got they they do, but all their their POs come in from all the different locations from the schools, right? The problem was to get the POs, right? We get the POs in, and then the POs are approved, the PO is there, so when you're when the whenever this order comes in, you got a receiver against it, and then you could automatically, you know, cut the check, but. From what I understand, remote areas can't get the the system to generate the PO. I don't understand.
But let's say I'm the police force, or I'm the fire department, or I'm Public Works, and I wanna say, hey, where am I at here to date against my budget? You don't have the ability to know that. You know, you should be able to log in someplace and say, hey, here, I see all my expenses, I see everything. And there's no ability to do that.
Right, if they don't have the ability to know what to have it all summarized, how do they know what they're spending?
Exactly.
Like writing checks and not keeping track of your checkbook and then finding that, oops, I overdressed. You can't hold them accountable if you can't provide them with the information to control it.
It's uh it's it's the.
A little archaic.
Look, the software, the AI software now, I think would fit great into public work, into planning and zoning, because you could get the state regs, the local regs, and when you had an applicant come in, you could, you know, put their application in there to see if it's, you know, along with the with the regs. That way, you get a new member of planning and zoning, they don't know. They don't know the regs for a long time, okay? If you lose five of five people out of there, you're done. You're done, all right? The police now, the software isn't finished, but their camera will write their report, okay? Will write the report, okay? Saves them all that time. Now, you gotta go in there again and massage the report, take out, you know, all those other words out of there. But you take, you know, so that that to me, look, the time saver that is for cops, they're not just sitting all day typing up their report, right? At least they got a guide to go by. When I say here, now you know. You know, it's uh it's gotta be used. Other towns, it's gonna little by little use it, but it's it's gotta be used. We're in the dark here. It hurts me to call, I have to come down here like on and and look up stuff, because I can't I can't get it off anyone else.
When you come down here to look up stuff, do you log into a computer and do it yourself, or do you really log on them?
You have them draw it out for me. Right? I don't know the system.
Yeah.
And it's entered by, uh first of all, it'd be overall for the company. Then it'll probably be by department and then by account. And then, you know, and uh I don't know. It would be so much easier if we could, now we're gonna have our tablets and book.
Yeah.
And we're gonna do the budgets like instead of, you know, Excel Excel spreadsheet.
Budgets.
The spreadsheet. And then Brett goes, oh, I like that spreadsheet.
Well, I like it because I can track it.
Yeah, but you you can track it, but you you realize.
But I could also adapt to whatever system it is.
You also didn't realize that the budget you got in that book that we started the year with is not the final budget, because we have all the transfers in there, okay? Which personally, I don't I don't like doing that transfers anymore. But let those accounts sit out where to see what the heck we spent on over, once the department isn't over.
I agree.
I think as we move into budget season, I I think I'll have some different ideas as far as like looking at individual line items, which I think is a waste of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think we should just look at a department in general and say, two percent increase? You spend it how you you think you need fit, instead of wasting all this time looking at individual line items.
Right, right, too.
Yeah, you know, let's just think of this.
Kind of work backwards.
Look at the salary account. You got those salaries that got increased between now and when we did the budget. If we go back to look at our last year's budget, it's obsolete, it's wrong, because that was put into the bu- you know, and now, I will say, what we did in the past is we used our contingency account to cover those payrolls that we we didn't know what they're what they're gonna be, and we didn't wanna give out. We didn't wanna put in three percent, and they thought they got three percent until it was done. Okay, so that's how that's how it's always been done, and it works, but, you know.
All I'm saying is I'm open to not having to go through line by line by line and let departments be accountable for the budget we give them, and they figure out what line items to utilize to make their budget work. And then if they go over their budget, they're held accountable. And if that means we have to say, sorry, bud, there might be a small little lawsuit against you to keep people in line, so be it. We can't have people spending money that's not theirs.
Then they'd have to know every time, they'd have to exactly know how much they've spent.
Exactly.
So your responsibility is to tell them where they are.
Well, that they have a good working system, and you could.
And if we had a huge snowstorm, I mean, we're gonna run over.
Of course, there's there's always reasons, but, I mean, let's sit here and argue over two hundred fifty dollars for a line item.
Right, and then they have another line on.
And then, and then we get a contingency, then we got a transfer request.
We got a transfer.
Yeah.
I I think the key part of our budget is at least the manager come in here and talk about his department, okay? What we didn't, what we did, this board has always pushed forward, Towner Lane, that pump. We knew that pump was bad. We pushed a long time to get that, get started on that pump. We knew, we always put in our capital budget. There's other things, fire department needed something. We did all the supplies. We we figured it out how to do each year, supplies to get one big bill in five years, and other things like that. So you talk to the department manager, plus they'll let you know if they're on the walk. If you're a department manager, you you don't have the title manager, you're a manager, you gotta come here.
I'm not saying to go away from meeting with them and have them come in, but for us to then sit there and deliberate and deliberate over a hundred line items?
Yeah, no.
For a hundred dollars, yeah.
Yeah. Victor's big on that. Victor wants line item pennies. He's not, he wants pennies put back in the budget. Now, Victor, right, dollars, not hundreds of thousands, just dollars. So I I hear you. And you know, I I guess budget season, I haven't gotten the notice from the school board as far as, we usually go to that meeting over there. Rumor had it that they've been told not to have us over there like that anymore.
Really?
That's what I heard. That's just, and I just say it's.
So we're uninvited?
Huh?
We're uninvited?
Oh, that would be stupid. They should be working collaboratively with us.
That's it. It ends every year. What happens? Do they sit down and tell us what each school's doing, what they're what's going on? I don't know. I don't know, but it's usually around January. Right now, we get invited, so we'll see. And uh. So unless um, any anybody got anything, any questions that I?
So Wednesday night will only be about Quaker burn schools, not finding appropriation?
Appropriation for uh how much how much we wanna put in our appropriation. The way it works, and it works crazy, is we have the joint meeting with the board of select. They go have their meeting, we go have our meeting, okay? Then we come back and we arrange a date for a town meeting. Do I have the town meeting if we haven't agreed on what we're doing? I don't I don't know, but that's the way that's the way the charter reads.
So we have it on Wednesday night with it?
I think.
It's not been posted.
It's not been posted.
Well, it'll be a special meeting, so they can post it tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we might have a meeting Wednesday night.
I'm pretty sure it'll be posted. Or he did say we have a meeting, but.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, but nobody nobody called to confirm it, right? Christian, I was, to get this meeting posted. Begrudgingly, my wife, the postal thing, right?
Don't go blaming her.
Begrudgingly, I had her, I said, get me that, and I was going to Plainville, so I came down here Friday, ghost town. So, the town clerk was closed, uh Christian was here. So I says, I gotta get this thing posted. So she said, I'll see if I can get ahold of Margaret. And she did, she got ahold of Margaret, and it was posted, so we could have a meeting tonight.
Well, as long as it's, it doesn't have to be posted online to be official, it just has to be posted outside on the board.
Oh.
Yeah.
I've always gone online.
Well, you want online, because our charter says we we want it to be on there, but to be official, it just has to be on the board, outside. It has to just be posted. That's the requirement, just so you know.
Just so that's that's considered posted.
The the meetings are still posted out there.
No, no, I mean, the selectman meeting for Wednesday?
I don't know.
Oh.
No, it's not, it's not.
I didn't think it was posted.
So, okay, I'm gonna say that it's posted outside, actually.
Yeah.
How would we know?
That's how that's how it always worked before the website.
You don't drive by on your way home and check the board.
But that's how it always was before the website.
When the town crier would go to the door and say, you know, with the meeting.
It was your blame, it was your blame.
What century are we in?
Now, I'm talking about the board inside the board outside.
No, I know, the one outside, yeah, but still.
I get it, I check it forty-five, I'll check it five times a day.
I don't have time.
Yeah, there's still, what's tomorrow or fifteen, yeah, there's still nothing sort of.
Special meetings don't require twenty-four hours, yes.
Twenty-four. I got nervous. I said, let me get this on Friday.
Yeah.
And they got Margaret to come down and put it in, so that helped.
There there was a typo, why not?
I know there was. Guess what? There wasn't a typo. Go back, because Margaret wrote in on the day. It was supposed, it's Thursday, it's supposed to be Monday. Everything, the thing posted, everything said Monday, the thirteenth, and everything, that was fine. But on the on the inside, it said Thursday. Margaret scratched that out. She put Monday, it was, put my initials on it. Change it. I says, Margaret, we're gonna do it. So again, I'd like to take the blame for that, but my wife put that day in.
She's kind of electric for her own pride, it's not like. Um for our regular meeting, that is still gonna happen?
Sure will.
Um well, we set the, we have to set the calendar for the year?
We already did. We sent that calendar. It's been pushed up. Fourth twenty-fourth.
It's the fourth.
But we, did we check it for conflicts? Let, to see if it like.
It's been a long time ago, but I had that thing a long time ago. I don't remember that.
I don't think we did, I don't think we set twenty twenty-five to go through and make sure that.
Last year.
Yeah, to make sure it didn't fall on like Christmas Day or whatever, that.
Well, I don't know what I did with it, but we.
I thought we did it.
We did it. We had to do it, otherwise this, we'd have special meetings all year. It's, I know, I I delivered it to the town's office. I got it someplace. I had to, I'll send it to you. We have, we did it.
Hold there's conflict, we just came for it.
Yeah, I just.
I don't recall doing the meeting. I don't recall doing the calendar.
I did, you know what? Dana did it for me.
Dana?
Dana Dana printed it out, yes.
And they're not gonna tell me that she did.
Yeah, she did. She did. I went down, I went down. We had, I don't know, one of the meetings, I said, I thought, maybe I didn't hand it out and say approve, something like that. Your fault.
Because she wasn't here.
Yeah, we, that's your fault, because you weren't here. Yeah, we, I I got, I, the calendar came out for conflicts, uh the one that's usually is the conflict is Memorial Day. And Christmas would be again, the Christmas week. We pushed it up. I'll dig it up. Someplace, I don't know what I did with it.
I did, yeah, it's, I was just, I was thinking, but it's not a big deal.
No, that's it. We got about, I would say, I'll add up the flood that we have, but there's a big cost for flood coming in that we don't have. It's because the engineering isn't done yet. And, you know, people people like took it, took a few times off during the holidays, too.
Would it be nice if Jim could put all this, like what you just, what we all talked about tonight, like on a sheet for us, don't you think?
Yeah, that would be nice.
Finance, you know, finance, I don't know.
It would be nice if if um you could call it out, or, you know, an account. Have an account for each project. It's all you have to do, put the total, put the the monies against that came in, and the money spent, and who the con- who the who the vendors were. That's twenty.
Is uh is there a motion to the chair? Is that what it's next, or are we still?
Motion to the chair.
Okay, somebody?
Okay.
Motion to the chair.
Say. I said one hour, six o'clock. So if you, anyone have anything, any questions that were were brought?
Well, that's my concern.
Yeah, you know, it the I think the big thing is, we're gonna get that money from FEMA. If they hang us out three or four years, you know, we're gonna be borrowing that money for three or four years, and we're gonna have to use some of it, because eventually, we gotta we gotta pay the uh, you know, the the rubber stuff to.